I'd like to call this meeting to order July 13th. It is... This is your father. It's 7:32 PM. Can I have a roll call please?
Village President Collins.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ward.
Here.
Trustee DeBoe.
Here.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnell.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Werner Zabitz. Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. An adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
And we have one resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution 2015-154, authorizing an executive session at the July 13th, 2015, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to discuss the following matters: Redevelopment updates, contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege; 298 Walton Avenue, contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege; Village Hall update, contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege; and collective bargaining agreements, updates, contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege.
Is there a motion?
A motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? We'll be back at 8 o'clock.
Sir.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. It is eight oh seven PM, Monday, July thirteenth. Can I have a roll call, please?
Village President Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Clark. Trustee Davis Ward.
Here.
Trustee DeBowie.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner's absent. Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, as a reminder to everyone, a couple meetings ago, we've had so many special meetings, I don't know what a couple meetings looks like. We did appoint Mr. Jeffrey DeBowie to fill the unexpired term of myself, which means he will be serving on this governing body through May twenty seventeen. Good luck, Jeff. Mr. DeBowie did take an oath of office that night so that he could immediately start beginning to participate in the matters of the board. Obviously, we wanted to have a formal ceremony for Mr. DeBowie, which we will be doing tonight, and I'm sure all of us will have some words following that. So, Mr. DeBowie, if you'd like to invite your family up. Mary, this is all about you, so you let us know what looks good for you. Ready?
I, Jeff DeBowie, do solemnly swear.
I, Jeff DeBowie, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
For the township of South Orange Village.
For the township of South Orange Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Jeff.
Thank you.
Big hug, big hug.
No big speech? No big speech?
He gets to give his speech from over here. And Jeff, if you'd like to say a few words?
Sure. Well, I'd like to thank my family for being here this evening, for this moment, and I'd also like to thank a couple of good friends, recognized former village president Douglas Newman and his wife Carol, sitting there. Thank you for being here to share this moment. I'm honored and privileged to be chosen by the South Orange Board of Trustees to fill the vacant trustee's seat. Through the years, I've worked with most of you, and we've gained a mutual respect for one another, and I look forward to continuing that good work. I wish to publicly thank the Board of Trustees for this opportunity, and also their kind words when they made the appointment, really very heartfelt. I wish also to thank my family for supporting my decision to undertake this opportunity. They've been there through the years of my public service, gone through my long meetings and being away at times, but they understand the benefit of public service and have been very supportive, so I thank them. I look forward to working with the village administration and also the different departments in the village, and also the different committees that also work within the village. But most of all, I want you to know that I look forward to serving the community, okay? I know you did not have an opportunity to elect me, but I assure you, I will work very hard to earn your trust and respect while I undertake this obligation, while I undertake this leadership role for the betterment of the South Orange community. Thank you.
Do the trustees have any additional comments?
I think we said them all.
We did, we, we.
It would be a little saccharine.
We went on and on. So, I'll just add a couple things just on behalf of the entire governing body.
Jeff's honeymoon is over.
Not yet. So, I think one important thing to note about Jeff is that we kept trying to give him a little bit of an opportunity to get acclimated with the boards, the commissions, the committees, the budget, all the things that we're looking at, and he jumped in right away and participated in probably one of the most significant votes. He learns very quickly. I think the dynamic on the Board of Trustees right now is really good. We're having some great discussions and debates, and just having Jeff on this governing body is such an honor and privilege, I know, to all of us, and I know that the staff will enjoy working with you as much as all of us have over the years. And a very big special thanks to Jeff's family because we know this is a big, you know, commitment for you to let us borrow, your husband and your dad, and he's just an amazing guy. He's done so much in this town, and I know that all of you are very proud of him, and he's going to do a great job for this town over the next two years. So, thank you, and Jeff, we are certainly ready for your tenure.
Well, I look forward to working with you.
So, next up, we have public comments. As a reminder to the public, if you can state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. This is the first of two public comment periods. We generally do them before the board takes action and then immediately after the board takes action. So, if there's anybody from the public that wishes to address the Board of Trustees, please come to the microphone at the front of the stage.
Hi, Virginia Canino, forty-two Blanchard Road.
Turn the mic down a little.
Better? Okay. First of all, thank you, Sheena, for organizing the TNBR meeting a couple of months ago, and I wanted to know where we stand on that, is there going to be a vote? I'm concerned because this morning, we just fined a woman a thousand dollars plus court fees for cat feeding, and just as a note, I happen to know the rescue that took some kittens from her, and she has spayed and neutered five, six cats and licensed them, so she's not one of the irresponsible people. So, going forward, can we side with Maplewood and Livingston? West Orange and East Orange are discussing this, and the only towns close to us who don't seem to have it on the agenda right now is Irvington and Newark. So, do you know when we'll have a vote on this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to address the Board of Trustees? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment section of the agenda, and to Ms. Canino's question about the. Go, go.
I just wanted to acknowledge Donna Smith in the back. I did not see you.
From the board event.
Yes, from the board event. Thank you for being here.
Hi, Donna. Ms. Canino's question about the presentation, as you may recall, we had Ms. Michelle Lerner come in and speak to the governing body. I had helped facilitate that meeting because I'd been approached by some residents to talk about TNR, kind of the benefits of it, some of the other municipalities around us, surrounding us that were embracing this new way of dealing with animal control in a very humane way. At that meeting, it was shared with the public that because statutorily, we have a Board of Health, it is within their jurisdiction to recommend policy changes as it relates to TNR. It was a very good conversation that I think the governing body had that night, and it pulled together us, along with Board of Health members, to make sure that we were all looking at the same material and getting the same information at once. But subsequently, the Board of Health came up with a presentation to respond to some of the things that were raised by Ms. Lerner, and if I recall, their recommendation, well, I'm certain the recommendation was against TNR, and they had based that off of facts, information from the New Jersey Department of Health. It is not necessarily that we agree, because I have a fair amount of questions about what seems to be a very big gap between what their view is as a real public health risk in South Orange, and I'm having a hard time balancing that against several communities that have been able to successfully implement it in a very humane way, and also address the population of feral cats. There is a Board of Health meeting, if I remember correctly, trustee Davis Ward, is it this Thursday?
Is this the third Thursday?
Third Thursday?
This is the second Thursday.
Are they meeting? Do you know where they meet?
I can tell you in one moment. I believe it's always the third Thursday, but I'm going right to the calendar.
At what time?
Yeah, it's at seven thirty.
Is there a public comment portion of the Board of Health meeting?
I believe there is, but it's open to the public. It's publicly noticed, it's on the calendar, and it's generally every third Thursday of the month, at seventy-six South Orange.
And I'm happy to also email you in advance some of the things that were raised to the governing body. Again, this is a balancing act because they have their role. We obviously can't jump over that role because they are empowered to make policy recommendations, unlike Maplewood, who I think you worked with on the TNR policy. It is their township committee that then becomes the Board of Health. In South Orange, we're the Board of Trustees, and we also have an independent authority, which is the Board of Health that operates on its own.
Madam President, that's a very good point, and I think that that may be the confusion and the frustration, the confusion and the frustration. The Board of Health in South Orange is an autonomous entity governed by state statute, and so they really own and have the responsibility for these type of decisions. And so I would encourage you to attend these meetings because they're open to the public, and that is where this particular item is decided and managed and handled, because they are a state-approved board that has autonomy separate from us, so.
So, that's going to be this Thursday, which is in our municipal offices, the conference room, seventy-six South Orange Avenue, third floor, and I'm happy to supply the information in advance of some of the things that the governing body received in the form of a presentation. And again, that does not necessarily reflect the opinions of all of us sitting up here. It might some, it might not others, but right now, we're kind of honoring their process to review this information. I actually might be at that Board of Health meeting as well. Is there anything that trustees would like to add to that in response to the question? Okay. Next, we're on to our announcements. First, the South Orange Village Center Alliance Farmers Market is open weekly on Wednesdays from two PM to seven thirty PM in the Sloan Street Lot across from the New Jersey Transit Station. All of your favorite farmers are back at the market in addition to some great new vendors. This market has everything you need to make your perfect four-course meal, so be sure to visit the market every Wednesday through October. Second, curbside recycling collection has been switched to every other Thursday and began on Thursday, July ninth. For more information, go to our website, southorange.org, or check the most recent gaslight. Number three, South Orange, just, okay, I'm excited about this one. Number three, South Orange's sixth annual National Night Out will take place on Tuesday, August fourth, on Flood's Hill. At six thirty PM, the event kicks off with live music featuring Isle Five, a hot rock-pop cover band, as well as a public safety fair where residents can learn more about the various departments and organizations in town. There will be a Kid Zone with bouncy houses, coloring stations, activities, and free merchandise giveaways, including t-shirts, frisbees, balloons, and glow sticks. Food trucks. Food trucks and vendors will also be on site, so come hungry. Then, at 8:30 p.m., sit under the stars with some popcorn and cotton candy and enjoy Big Hero Six. Don't forget your blankets and lawn chairs. Is there anything anybody would like to add to the announcements? Did I miss anything?
Is there going to be jousting?
There is jousting, and I'm also looking into a dunk tank. Well, since we're at a live meeting, would anybody be interested in doing the dunk tank?
Barry.
You know I would do it in a heartbeat.
And I nominate the new guy.
Jeff's heading in with the floaties. All right, it should be a very good event.
Can you get us anybody from the county in the dunk tank?
He said he doesn't recommend it from the county. Our representative, Frank Del Du Guardio, said he did it at a county event, and he'll never do it again. With that information, I really, really now suggest that the new guy.
All right, great. So, we're moving on to ordinances for first reading. Ms. Caljean?
Ordinance 2015-12, first introduction and first reading of an ordinance establishing salary ranges for certain non-union and supervisory personnel.
Mr. Lewis, do you want to go over this?
You recall, you're aware, we, in order to facilitate being able to do actual salaries by resolution, what we do is we adopt a salaries, fairly common practice among municipalities, a salary ordinance that has ranges, so that when you do go, you know, if you have a new hire, if you have a new person, you don't have to do an ordinance each time, as long as you set the salary within that range. So this just, we haven't done it for a number of years, this just sort of adjusts the ranges and then positions us, and again, this doesn't set any actual salaries, that'll all be done at a later date by resolution. And again, what it does, give us the flexibility to not have to do an ordinance every single time you have a new hire or something, because there's a cost associated with that, there's time associated with that.
And also, for the benefit of the Board, we are doing rice notices to employees for our planning meeting at the end of the month, so there will not be any resolution setting specific salaries until we finish talking about performance evaluations, et cetera, get through our planning meeting, and then we'll see a resolution next month. This is just for the ranges, right now.
Can I just get a point of clarification? Is that a typo, or do we really expect we might get a CFO for $5,000?
No, it's not a typo. It's the low end, because our current relationship is, it's part of the finance contract, and you still have to have an appointed CFO, so that's what the current salary is, but it's bundled into the bargain. So we had to put the low end.
The only other comment is that we had an ordinance for the chief magistrate and the magistrate prior to this, and it looks like the numbers were different from that ordinance.
On the ranges?
Yeah.
Although this would supersede that, I think this just made sure to address.
It's lower. Yeah, okay.
Unless there's any other discussion, can I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance for first reading and introduction, 2015-13, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48:4-45.14.
Mr. Lewis, we did receive some questions from the trustees about this and a couple from the public, and I know this is kind of almost a formality that we have to do, but the more detailed you can be, the better.
Yeah, absolutely. This is one that we've done every year, and actually, Trustee Levinson and I have had some conversations about its continued utility anymore. Historically, they state the sort of budget limitations that they placed on it was through the appropriations cap, which is the statute reference in this ordinance, and they cap year-over-year appropriation increases, subject to certain exceptions, to 2.5%, but you could do an ordinance to say up to 3.5% and then you were allowed to do a cap bank, and you could bank. The theory behind the banking is to not encourage every town to just go up to the full cap every year for fear that they'd lose their ability to do it, so that it, you know, at least gave you an opportunity to be rewarded for some fiscal discipline if you were below that cap. You could have that in the bank if, say, the next year you had some unforeseen circumstances, you'd have the ability to utilize some of that banked cap without having to go through the emergency or go to the division to get approval. Historically, we've done it, everywhere I've ever been, we've done it, just to sort of the rainy day. It is certainly not to suggest, and in fact, I want to be clear, that at no time, certainly in my tenure, have we ever even remotely approached the 2.5%, much less the 3.5%. And in fact, without even applying appropriation cap adjustments for medical increases, pension increases, just in gross appropriation increases, the proposed budget only goes up 0.6%. So I want to be clear, you know, the continuing utility of the cap bank, it is probably less significant now, because in the intervening period, we've had the tax levy cap come online, which limits tax increases, increasing the tax levy to 2%. So, the situations in which you would be in a position to use that appropriation cap bank to, you know, have higher appropriations and still be within that 2% tax levy cap, you know, are somewhat limited. Where you could envision it, if you had a significant growth in revenues, for example, if you had additional non-tax revenues, you know, pilots, or, you know, any other, where you had a revenue growth that would not adversely affect your tax levy, so it wouldn't push that over the cap, but it may leave available funds if you wanted to increase programs, if you wanted to do sort of one-time capital programs, if you wanted to pay down extra debt, whatever you wanted to do, by kind of reserving that flexibility of the cap bank, you have the opportunity to do that. You know, again, the likelihood, it's significantly less important at this point. Again, we've never even approached the 2.5% appropriations cap, and again, we're at 0.6 this year, and that's even without adjusting, and we're probably negative again if you apply the exceptions, but, you know, so it's, it's one of those things that I think it doesn't hurt to do it. Who knows what the future holds? It does create the bank for two years after this, so my recommendation is just to do it. I seriously doubt we'll ever use it, but might as well do it.
Are there any questions or discussion from the trustees?
Yeah, my preference is, it's the appearance of the 3.5% and the misunderstanding of what you just explained, and I think the probability of us ever using it is very close to zero. I would prefer not moving on it, only because of the perception, knowing that basically we would never use it.
Let me play devil's advocate. We have been very, very good at managing our increases below, significantly below 2%, you know, 1, 1.5, or lower, but you never know what can come up that is unplanned.
But there are procedures that will allow you, on an emergency basis, to increase or get funding for those emergencies. There are other procedures available.
But the procedures, if it's a really emergency, isn't there a time involved in that? It may take a couple of months or whatever, if you already have that cap, and I need that clarity or understanding. We are motivated to be very, very aggressive in managing our increases, and our record proves that. You know, if you look at the last four or five years, if it wasn't for the increases in health benefits and other expenses that we cannot control, our increases would be flat or negative. That's how well we've managed those things.
But those are acceptable exceptions.
Right. But if we have this ability to bank this, knowing that the whole Board feels that, you know, we want to continue to keep our increases as low as possible, if something unforeseen happens, why would we handcuff ourselves and not take advantage of what the state statute allows us to do? Why would we not have that safety net in case something unforeseen comes up?
Barry, this ordinance, when you pass an ordinance, is this, I've done it a year-by-year basis?
We do it each year.
So this is not in perpetuity, this is just for 2015?
You have to do it each year, correct. And then, you know, theoretically, if you didn't do it, we're still going to have cap bank, because the mountain bank will just be up to 2.5% instead of 3.5%. You know, so, again, I don't, is this ever going to kick in in the next two or three years? Probably not.
So why has this been on here? Why are we discussing?
Well, I, you know, it's...
He does it every year?
A, there's absolutely zero risk, other than, I guess, the perception that Trustee Levinson refers to. Beyond that, there's no risk, no cost, no anything, and, you know, what I think and what I can guarantee may or may not happen in two years. And again, I would emphasize that the only scenario where it would come up would be, that I can envision, a scenario that you had unforeseen new non-tax revenues, so you had the ability, A, to exceed the appropriations limit and use that cap bank, but it wouldn't adversely affect the taxpayers, because they'd still be protected by the 2% levy cap anyway. So, the additional spending, by definition, would not be over the tax levy cap, it would just be additional spending because you had new revenue sources.
Yeah, so that's why, dealing with a perception that we have a track record to prove that, you look at the last five years, I mean, we have the lowest tax increases ever, so we...I don't even understand how one would have that perception that we would be so reckless with being concerned about managing tax increases. To me, it just makes sense to take advantage of a option in case something unforeseen comes up, that we can act quickly and responsibly to deal with that, and from the way our administrator explains it, it would not impact the increase on our residents as far as taxes. Do I understand it correctly?
Right. The tax levy is going to be controlled by the tax levy cap.
Right.
You know, look, is somebody going to read this and then go on some online blog and claim our budget went up 3.5%? Undoubtedly, but they go on and claim all kinds of stupid things. The reality of it, it isn't. The numbers are there, the budget's public. It doesn't take very quick to point to it and do the math, so if that's the risk...
And indeed, perhaps it even invites people who are interested in our process to come on board and to ask a good question and get a good answer to it. So I actually think it's very good to keep it.
I would say that, yeah, Trustee Levinson, I always trust your financial advice and wisdom, but in this one, I don't really see a reason for trying to fight against a minority perception that will always presume the worst about what we're trying to do when we know what we're trying to do and we know what the administrator's trying to do, and this is basically covered in case something bad happens.
Question, so, as I understand, so, without this resolution, we still could go to 2.5% correctly?
Yeah, we'll be able to bank, I don't have the number right in front of me, but we'll be able to bank appropriations between what we currently go up in, and again, 2.5%.
1.4, 2.5, so whatever we say, whatever we've gone under in the prior years.
It's an extra 1% in the bank at the end of the year, it doesn't really matter.
But we do this every year, it's the same thing we've been doing.
It's not worth as much discussion.
So with that said, I move.
And I second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Levinson?
No.
Trustee Rosner?
This is first reading.
Yes.
I'll vote yes to get into the second reading.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we have one more ordinance for first reading.
So that passed, just to be...
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-14, an ordinance, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village to create a new subsection entitled Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs Fees, and to amend subsection 5-71 to permit the Director of Recreation and Cultural Affairs to create appropriate rules and regulations.
Mr. Lewis, one more time.
As indicated, this just updates the recreation fees, and specifically, the director, you know, at least in practice, has always had, but this makes a clear legislative authorization to create rules and regulations. The principal purpose of this is more than anything, is just to update the fees to the current schedule recommended by the recreation department.
Is there anything, Trustee Schnell, you want to add to this?
I think it's as the administrator has described, and it's pretty straightforward. If there's any questions, then, no.
But I think this will fall under a common fee schedule in the future when we do the...
This will get rolled in and re-cardified.
Right.
Is there any other discussion, comments, questions from the trustees? If not, can I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And these need to be set down, correct, for a public hearing?
Yep.
August 10th.
I move that ordinance 2015-12, 2015-13, and 2015-14 be scheduled for a second reading and final passage at the August 10th, 2015 Board Meeting, and a public hearing be held at the time. For the reference ordinance, the village clerk was authorized to take the necessary action to make public notice for such hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? To Trustee Schnell's point, he raised a question a moment ago, and I kind of whispered, in case the public didn't hear. He asked if the ordinance passed, just for the benefit of the public, when we are dealing with ordinances, they're different from resolutions. Our charter governs that for trustees have to vote in the affirmative for an ordinance to be passed. So that was Trustee Clark, Trustee Davis Ford, Trustee Rosner, Trustee Schnell, Trustee Levinson voted no, and there was one extension, so that was four votes, so it did pass. I'm sorry, I didn't make that very clear, so I will do better moving forward. We're now moving on to resolutions for consent agenda.
Resolutions 2015-159 through 2015-167 have been placed on the consent agenda.
Are there some questions? I want to go over 165, 166, and 167. Anybody want to remove any other items, or are those the items that you would also like to discuss? Okay, great. So 165, just for clarification purposes, and I thank Trustee DeBowie for sitting in. He's basically filling my role as the former Public Safety Committee Chair, but at the planning meeting that the governing body will be having at the end of July, we are going to be looking at all the standing committees, the appointments to all the standing committees, the boards, commissions, advisory groups, et cetera. So right now, this is kind of interim, stopgap, to get us between now and the next meeting and figuring out, over the next two years, what the Board would like to do and where everybody best serves. And next, on 166 and 167, Mr. Lewis, if you can cover these two, and I'll fill in where need be?
Certainly. In both cases, so I'll talk just generally about what a conditional designation of a redeveloper is, because that's what both the resolutions are, and then I'll speak a little more specifically to the two different resolutions and what properties are affected. But essentially, under, either, under the local housing redevelopment law, designated redevelopment areas, which we have in the central business district, but also includes the new town-wide, village-wide rehabilitation designation, both of them, and it's a little confusing that even under redevelopment, you still effectuate that through a redevelopment agreement, and it's unfortunate that they didn't distinguish the two and have like a rehabilitation agreement, so it would be clearer, but these two particular projects are both located, are not located in redevelopment zones, so we're not talking about redevelopment under the long-term tax exemption, 30-year pilot scenario. What we're talking about is the potential for five-year short-term tax abatement, which is, again, it is taxes spread across the taxing entities, but just phased in at 20%, 40%, 60%, 80%, and then after five years, you're up to 100% of taxes. What it does do is give us the ability to have those type of financial agreements on the short-term tax, but equally, if not more importantly, the additional zoning-type controls that come with a redevelopment agreement and a redevelopment plan. So in these two cases, we are, the first one is the Villas at Orange Lawn LLC, which is an entity that has a contract to purchase the, basically, the eastern vacant five acres of the Orange Lawn Tennis Club property, and the second one is for company Meridian in the Valley, South Orange LLC, which has, is a contract purchaser of a number of properties that are basically on either side of Forest Street, between Valley and the railroad tracks. So in each case, this is just sort of the first step in that process, which simply recognizes that those two entities are contract purchasers, have the authorization from the owner to negotiate and try and see if an acceptable redevelopment plan, again, for rehabilitation only, can be reached, which would authorize certain, you know, a particular type of project, and also negotiate a potential financial agreement. So, need... So neither one of these, they don't authorize anything other than identify those entities as the entities with whom we can negotiate these issues. And then equally important, comes with it the requirement that they post escrow deposits to cover the cost of the villages, redevelopment council plan, or other professional fees, you know, with the idea being, if you want to develop, you ought to pay the freight and not have the taxpayers paying for it. So those are the, kind of, the two significant and salient points of these two resolutions. Again, neither one of them authorizes any development of any kind, doesn't approve anything other than now we kind of formally start discussions with these two entities.
I will add to resolution 166, dealing with Orange Lawn, is this has been quite the process. I would also thank members of the neighborhood, Joe and Zev and some others who have been working with the village. We have been having informal conversations with the neighbors, with the club, with the developers. As those of you who have been following the story may recall, there was a first ordinance that was introduced. We were basically told it's not a good ordinance. We had to go back, revisit it. We've tried to work with all the interested parties to try and come up with something that would meet people in the middle. And so we're in a good place now. I think we've lowered the unit count significantly. We've got the density consistent with the zoning of the surrounding properties. We've got a lot of feedback, you know, from the folks who've been very vocal about this issue. And so we're kind of in a place now where we're at least reasonable enough where we can have a conditional redeveloper. And then, really, it's very preliminary on number 167 with Fourth Street. This is really just the beginning of a conversation. And so what we anticipate is, at our next development committee meeting, which is going to be on July, Thursday, July, July 23rd, is, at that point, we're going to be discussing with members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, which trustee Mark Rosner chairs, and also members of our advisory board, the experts and professionals on our development committee to start discussing that item in a little bit more detail. And obviously, these are public meetings, and we welcome the public to participate. Is there-
You just had one thing, because you reminded me of it. One of the things I do want to emphasize, particularly about 2015-166, which is the Orange Lawn. This particular designation is for a portion of it, and the map attached to it shows the approximate five acres. However, and that's in part because you only do the conditional designation for a property that somebody's actually contemplating developing. But, and I think it's important, and it's spelled out in the resolution, we did indicate the intention of the village to regulate the entirety of the property, including what will be the remaining 11 acres, assuming something goes forward on the front five acres. What was important, I think, to the village, certainly important to the neighbors, and I think understood by the club, is that in moving forward, were this to move to the point where we're going to do a redevelopment plan? The intention is to do a plan for the entire 16 acres, some of which would govern potentially this five acres and what may or may not be permitted there, but the balance of which would also govern what would be able to be done on the remaining property. And at least preliminarily, the discussions in the club's, you know, understands this, is that the intent is to, the entire property currently has the planned multifamily, their residential cluster B zoning, which permits up to 6.6 units per acre. And the intent is to not only restrict and lower that density for potentially this five acres, but also for the remaining 11 acres. So I know that that has been a point of concern, and understandably so, for the surrounding neighborhood, is, okay, if this doesn't work in the club, the club goes under, what's going to be able to go on the balance? So I did want to emphasize that while this doesn't actually designate anybody for that, it's because there is no plan currently to redevelop that, or rehabilitate, or do anything on that 11 acres. But our intention in doing a redevelopment plan will be to control all 16 acres.
Can you also just go, for those just tuning in for the first time, what's going to happen in terms of process once we get to a redevelopment plan? So when there is something substantial, and there's something down in writing, then when is the next shot that the public has to formally participate?
Certainly. So procedurally, the first step is conditional designation. The second step is a conditional redevelopment agreement, and in conjunction with that, presumably there'd be a redevelopment plan. A redevelopment plan gives us significantly more control and more ability to be very project-specific, including, you know, exact layouts, you know, the normal sort of zoning controls, density setbacks, and all that. But you can get more control in terms of exactly where properties will be located on the property, what they're going to look like, aesthetics, and all that. The redevelopment plan, in the Orange Lawn case, for example, would be, I think, that specific, certainly on the, potentially on the five-acre piece, perhaps not as specific aesthetically on the remaining 11 acres, but maybe, maybe it would be, because presumably you'd want to have them kind of harmonious. But that is done by way of an ordinance. So there's an ordinance that gets introduced, there's notice, public notice, specific certified mail notice to surrounding properties within the statutory 200-foot distance. It is introduced by the Board of Trustees. Then it goes to the Planning Board, just like any zoning ordinance, there'd be a public hearing at the Planning Board. They'll be examining it for consistency with the master plan. The Planning Board then makes a recommendation, which comes back to the Board of Trustees, may have suggested changes, may find it consistent, not consistent. Ultimately, then, the decisions with the Board of Trustees. When it returns, there is another public hearing with full notice to the public and interested stakeholders on that ordinance. And only then, you know, if it's then passed and published and not challenged, and after that, the effective date, then it effectively becomes sort of equivalent to a zoning ordinance, and then that's what then would govern it.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the trustees?
I think we've had so many discussions that have been very informative and allowed for input, and as you articulated earlier, to make some changes based on input. I think that I have all the information I need right now.
Great, perfect. So seeing no more discussion, is there a motion for consent agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we have one resolution for separate action?
Resolution 2015-168, resolution authorizing the introduction of the 2015 municipal budget.
Mr. Lewis, we're back to you again.
Okay. Easy night. And again, I provided to you earlier, and then just today, we got the final, the state, the full-blown state document. You recall from prior years, the spreadsheet that I do just sort of compresses, and it follows in order the lines on the state budget, but condenses it down to a little more manageable five pages. The budget this year, you know, and it continues, it's a challenge, and there's work involved, and we, you know, has thus far successfully navigated ourself from 2011 with the one-time revenue use to this point. We certainly see some things in the future that bode well. The Third and Valley pilot will be coming online. They still, hopefully, are on target to get CO'd at the end of this year, which would put them on full pilot next year. You know, with every year, we sort of scrutinize where we're at. We try and, the goal is always to provide and continue to provide the level of service that the residents have come to expect, which, quite frankly, I think is really excellent service, and do so in a manageable way with, you know, a manageable amount of tax increase. Some tax increase is just unavoidable. There are certainly increases in things that are beyond our control, health benefits, pension bills, insurance bills, things of that nature. Everything that we can control, we control to the greatest extent possible. The proposed budget, you know, by way of example, and I'll have a much more thorough presentation at the public hearing, we'll have the PowerPoint where I'll highlight the, you know, the various items that are up or down, the good news, the bad news, and all that, as I've done in prior years. But just for summary purposes, you know, this proposed budget, if you, when you take out the sort of the pass-throughs that are kind of a wash, the total budget goes up by, from $33,308,000 to $33,530,000. So it's about a $200,000 increase, which, again, is only 0.6% increase in budget. What we continue to wrestle with is the revenues. And again, this is all part of the digging out of the hole of having that million-and-a-half-dollar revenue that was used in '11 that disappeared. We've had to kind of systematically try and replace that. So, you know, unfortunately, because of, it's not because of increased spending, it's because of decreased revenues. There is a light at the end of the tunnel, I think. Again, we're continuing to see progress and growth in some of our revenues. We do have some new developments, and those coming online. But the, so the net effect of, the revenues are basically down by a little over a few hundred thousand. So that, combined with the minimal spending increases, winds up making the levy go up. We also, unfortunately, because of all the tax appeals that have been filed, our aggregate assessed value is down about $5 million, which doesn't help either. So that has the effect that the rate increase is slightly higher than the levy increase, you know, as it's teed up currently. And we will, of course, continue to look, and to the extent we can, you know, tighten up anything between now and the public hearing, we always have the option to do that by way of an amendment to reduce things. We certainly wouldn't be adding things. So as it's currently proposed, the increase in the levy is 1.6%. The effect on the average assessed home would be $82. And again, it will continue to provide all the services that the residents are entitled to at the same level, addresses all the anticipated and, you know, contractual obligations for some of our collective bargaining agreements, and pension payments, state payments. It does also incorporate, we did, and when we had our prior budget workshops, we had a couple of them earlier, there were a couple initiatives that the former village president had in the budget that didn't seem to have the sentiment to stay in there, so some of those have been removed. I've certainly worked closely with the village president-
Don't tell Alex I took those.
-formulating this budget. And certainly because of some developments and things that have happened since then, and priorities of this village president, there's some additional emphasis on some of the things that have been talked about at meetings here, in terms of getting a little more of a handle on our planning and master plan, and land use things, and the facade motivating investment downtown Irvington Avenue Valley. So, you know, a lot of those ultimately were washed, so this is very similar at the bottom line to where we were before. We kind of took out certain things and have new emphasis on some areas, in some of the very, very few areas that we actually have any discretion. Most of this is pretty well locked in. But, you know, all in all, I think a responsible budget, it doesn't push too hard. We don't use, you know, all the available surplus, because that can be dangerous, you know, leave some there. We did a good job, again, of regenerating surplus from what we had the year before. And again, I have always looked at this as sort of the final year of this three-year bridge to get us to where we, you know, because we've all known, since I got here, the Third and Valley was coming online, and certainly a lot of these other potentials, just, I think, make the future that much brighter. But, you know, in general, I'm satisfied with it. And, you know, I want to thank the employees and the staff and the department heads for their, you know, their input, their assistance on this, but also their willingness and recognition that there are, you know, these are different times. Some of them have been here a long time ago, from when you had 5% and 6% increases, and everybody understands it now, and everybody gets on board, and we're doing more with less. But it's a credit, I think, to the entire organization, including the leadership of this board, village president. So that's what we got.
So also adding to the thank yous, the Finance Committee, obviously trustee Levison, trustee Rosner, and then trustee Schnall, who was on it, and welcome trustee DeBowie to it. Howard saved us another couple tens of thousands of dollars again in this past year. Just to go over some of the changes that I made specifically in the budget, and they aren't my items, they're actually board items that we've discussed. First was the matching grant program, so that came primarily from Irvington Avenue and then Sovka. So trustee Davis Ford, trustee Rosner, and trustee Schnall, you're all very familiar with that, so that match will be in there. We'll have a design review board set up where we will incentivize and match our small businesses to be able to improve the overall look of anything that's public-facing. That's one of the items. Coming from Planning and Zoning was a commitment to getting the master plan done. Rather than budget for, hey, let's start with the master plan, let's start with the planner who guides the master plan through this process in a very thoughtful and comprehensive way. That's budgeted for, for 2015, and obviously, we'd have to reappropriate that and the master plan in the upcoming year for 2016. But there is a likelihood, if we're aggressive, that we may be able to get grants for the master plan, which would be wonderful. Another item is something that came from Public Information and Marketing Committee, so this is trustee Clark, and trustee Schnall is looking at the branding aspects of our town, especially now that we're moving in a direction where Village Hall may not be the icon that we want to use. So there is money in there to be able to create whatever working group, and then do an RFP for a consultant to package everything, so you might have some level of accountability. I'm flexible with whatever direction the committee wants to move in, but I wanted to make sure it was budgeted for, so we can get started on that process. And then, Mr. Lewis, what else is in there?
No, I think those are the, sort of, the replacement initiatives. And I would point out, and since we're showing the love to trustee Levison, one thing, I know he particularly takes satisfaction in, and I will point out, this is, I believe, this is the third consecutive year that we've seen a decrease in our electricity, our street lighting, and our telephones, largely due to the efforts of trustee Levison. Between our energy aggregation, or going out to bid for more competitive gas prices on our gas lamps, he is a pit bull on identifying phone lines that we've been paying for that didn't ring to anywhere. I mean, in total, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, so that's certainly a credit to trustee Levison.
And didn't he also save us money on the, is it refinancing our debt, or?
Yeah. He's been at the forefront of those efforts as well.
Which was significant, too.
And I would point out, those really begin to pay off. Next year, we start to see a drop-off. But even, you know, what I, you know, it's minor. The debt service this year is down slightly, $16,000, but I think what's more significant about it is, of that $4,303,000 from last year, where we were paying down only $2,808,000 of principal, this year, we're paying down $3,100,000 of principal. So you're still paying $4,404,000, but you're paying off the principal by $300,000 more than you were next year, last year, which is a direct result of these refinancing and restructuring of the debt. So we're heading in the right direction.
Kudos. I have a question. Did you factor in the impact? I think this is the year that there's an extra payroll, a 27 payroll. Is this the year?
Yeah, well, no. I mean, this would have been a year for us. We, if we had, it's still, well, on hourly employees, it may actually hit you more, but on salaried employees, you would have just divided it by 27, so the net budget cost would be the same. But we don't do it that way, anyway. We, and I didn't, there's different ways to do it. I would still like to, and I'm still-
Is this the year for that extra payroll, though?
No, well, we accommodated by bumping an extra week, so between the last pay in December and the first pay in January, there was a three-week gap. Employees were actually used to it, because that's the way the village has always handled it. It comes every seventh year. And it went off, really, without a hitch, no resistance. So it's still 26 pays, it's still divided. I personally would like to get us to a 15th and 30th, 24 pays a year. That's the goal. It's not always easy, and there's union contracts that specify, and some of our unions can be kind of fickle, and anything you want to do, they want something for it, so we'll continue to work on that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hopefully, all the trustees feel that your initiatives and things that you're working on are reflected in the budget. Obviously, it's still just a first reading, so we could still make adjustments. Mr. Lewis will be preparing something a little bit more detailed for posting on the website. Again, my apologies to the public that this wasn't introduced a little bit sooner, but I think we managed expectations, that we had a lot going on with Village Hall. We've been scrambling a little bit and trying to get this together, and obviously, with an election in the middle of May, a quick transition, welcome new trustee, welcome new village president, that, you know, we tried to pull everything together and get it introduced. It's going to start a lot sooner this year, and hopefully, we'll have something introduced a lot sooner than July, and shoot for that.
And I would add, just for anyone who's concerned, there is, normally, the state has statutory deadlines, that you're supposed to introduce your budget. Because we are so unique with our May election, where you literally have a turnover in the governing body, and because you had potential for new trustees, you had potential for, well, we knew we were getting a new village president. This was all brought to the attention of the state, and the state did sign off on and give us the extension, recognizing that relatively unique circumstance. So we're in compliance with any deadlines from the state.
Madam President, I would make a request.
Can you say that one more time?
I'd like to make a request. I'll say it again.
I love that.
But not right now. The request I'd like to make, and I think that it really was something to help me understand better, is that when you make the presentation, the average person who doesn't understand better, is that when you make the presentation, the average person who doesn't understand that their total bill, when we say, you know, we've done all these things and we only increased our budget below 2%, whatever those numbers are, then they get their big bill and they say, well, they say, I'm not going to, anyway, they are taken aback. And so I'd like you to show that of every dollar that they collect in taxes, the municipal budget is only 27 cents or 27% of the overall tax that a property owner pays. So I think that would really be something helpful, that you go through your spreadsheet but then show that that's only 27% of the dollar or the taxes. 16% of their taxes, overall taxes include the county, and I think that would make, leave 57% that goes to the school board.
Right.
And that we only have control over managing that 27%. And I think that it's important for us to communicate that over and over again because then hopefully people have a better understanding of what we can control and manage and what we can control is less than a third of the taxes, but we do a good job of what we can control.
Yeah, absolutely. I can have those percentages and I'm also happy to report that for the fourth year in a row, we are, have the lowest increase of all three taxing entities.
Right.
So each year, we've been lower than either the Board of Ed or the county in the increases.
Just one other thing, can we have this up on the website, both your summary and the state forms?
Full document.
Let's shoot for, just so we set a timeline, Mr. Lewis, what is reasonable to put together something?
Well, just the documents themselves can go up relatively quickly. I will have something a little more explanatory I can have by the end of the week and have it up on the website.
That'd be great. Are there any other questions or comments from the trustees?
Move.
Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Clark?
Yep.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we are moving along to the approval of the bills. I'm sorry, we have one more resolution?
We didn't do this resolution.
Yeah, my mistake. Been talking too much. If we could, while we're on it, and I intended to add this to the, we had a resolution that I did put on the day, so I apologize for not having it on there. There was some confusion as to whether it had been done previously and we determined it had not. This is some additional consulting services and technology implementation services from, it's done via SHI International Corporation pursuant to state contract with the underlying subcontractor Radka CO LLC, which is Phil Winarsky. He's been invaluable and I certainly defer to trustee Levison who could echo this, I think, in implementing and project planning and a lot of the technologies and there's still some more, a number of things that are ongoing, particularly in the police department that we have a need for these services, so that's what this resolution's for.
So this is going to be added as another resolution for separate action and it's going to be 2015-169, is that correct?
No, 170.
170.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an add-on.
The budget one didn't have a number.
Okay, 1.
Yeah, we have 169.
Because liquor license one is 169, so this is going to be 170?
Mm-hmm.
And I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are going to approve the bills. Trustee Levison.
I move the bills list distributed to the board previously, distributed by the treasurer CFO for their, for the board's review.
Have a roll call, please.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, I'm going to need a motion to recess the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees and to convene as the Alcohol Beverage Control Board.
And just a reminder to the clerk that the village president can vote on this resolution.
Oh, I've been waiting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? We have now convened as the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board of the Township of South Orange Village. Ms. Caljean, can you read the resolution?
Resolution 2015-169, resolution approving the renewal of liquor licenses for the 2015-16 license term. With one exception, I have to remove Father Vincent Manella Center of Italian Culture. They failed to go online. We have a new system with the state, everything has to be done online now. They promised me they would get it done next week. Everyone else is paid and up to date, everybody's online and did everything they had to do, so they're aware of this and they're going to get it done by next week. So, there's also an extension, by the way, with the state to September, I believe, 18th for license renewals.
Has feedback from the police been?
Yes, everything is done. Everything is done, tax clearance certificates, everything.
And the question about Cryin's?
Cryin's, we cannot transfer a liquor license if there's no tax clearance certificate.
So it's still?
And he is aware of that, Mr. Cryin. I spoke to him and he advised his attorney that he was working on it. He needs a special ruling from the director of ABC, so I believe he's working on that.
And that's a transfer application or renewal?
You can't, it's a renewal. I mean, he's okay, he's paid his arreals. But we can't, he can't do anything until he has a tax clearance.
So you have to renew before you can transfer.
He has to pay the tax clearance certificate first and then we could move on it. Until then, we can't move on it.
Are there any questions, comments, discussion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are going to approve the bills. Trustee Levison.
I move the bills list distributed to the board previously, distributed by the treasurer CFO for their, for the board's review.
Have a roll call, please.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee DeBowie?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful.
I think that is precisely why we should all have a hat or a false mustache that we put on just for a minute while we do the.
You should apply, you have to shave.
You have to rip yours off.
Okay, and now we are on to.
I volunteered to do it with some hot wax.
And now we are on to reports. The first is myself. So last Tuesday, I believe it was, I had my first meeting with Mayor DeLuca from Maplewood and we had a really good discussion. I was very pleased with some of the things that we kind of reviewed. We're looking at staffing, departments, opportunities for sharing services, really anything and everything that might help the two towns operate a little bit more efficiently. The Shared Services Committee has not met, I don't believe, for quite some time and what I'd like to do is to reestablish this committee, obviously with a commitment from both South Orange and from Maplewood. In speaking with trustee Levison about how we would structure this, obviously myself, I would like to be involved, trustee Levison would like to be involved, and then we thought it might be a good idea to rotate the trustee depending on what the issue is. So if we're talking about recreation, we would say trustee Schnell, come participate. If it's something that relates to planning and zoning or development, et cetera, we'd bring in trustee Rosner and so on and so forth, so that it's not the same people, but depending on what the issue is that we're exploring, that might be the most appropriate. Is there feedback on that? Do you like that type of model or I'm open to suggestions from the board?
No, I think that works, that makes good sense.
Trustee Clark, I see the look on your face.
Thinking.
Thinking?
Thinking.
Anybody else thinking? Because I would like this to be a little bit more permanent, a little bit more standing committee, regular meetings, there's really a lot that we can be discussing and so it's going to be a time commitment, so got to make sure we're all committed to doing this. We'll introduce a resolution, we'll ask Maplewood to do the same. We'll obviously probably, excuse me, list up bullet points of all the various things and then obviously prioritize them because we can't do everything at once, but really an active conversation with them. We're obviously going to be doing it with the Board of Education as well, I think we all committed to doing that, but baby steps right now, work with the municipality first and then trustee Rosner has something we'll be discussing later in the agenda as well.
I assume also that you'll be inviting administrators from both towns.
Absolutely. So the, I mean, a sample is if we're talking about, say, fire or police or anything like that, it would be the elected officials are respective administrators and then your police or fire chiefs. So depending on the issue, I just can't get it out of my throat, we'll pull those folks together.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Did you finish the thought, trustee Clark?
Does it make any sense to, to try to include representatives from the school system on that? There may be some areas where, maybe that's just an isolated incident or two, but again, if we think of, if we think of this in the way that taxpayers pay their bill, which is one great big bill as opposed to three separate chunks, there may be ways that we can work on shared services with the school systems, for instance.
We have done that in the past when we did the lawn cutting and when we looked at recreation, we included the school district.
Okay. So just on an isolated basis, we could do that?
I will, I have a meeting with the Board of Education and Maplewood coming up in early August to talk about public safety and the school resource officer, so I will raise it with them then, since they will have their administrators with them as well if there's an opportunity to involve the schools, or maybe they would like to be involved on an ad hoc basis, depending on what the issue is that we're talking about and if it's appropriate for them. So that's the report on, well, that's the first bullet point. I'm going to skip the next one, I thought we would have something a little bit more substantial to update the board on. You received information from our co-op council on the status of affordable housing, some of the issues and challenges that municipalities are facing, and so I'm going to hold that for the next meeting to provide something a little bit more substantial. Professional service RFPs, I described this before, we started getting into special meetings, meetings galore, but back to what we're doing. So, and we've mapped out a timeline. I'm going to thank Ellen Foy Malgieri for working with us on this, but we're ready to put out the RFPs for several professionals. As a reminder, in one of our ordinances, we think it's healthy and good for the organization to rotate, putting out RFPs no less than every three years for all of our professional service contracts. And so for this year, based on the input from the Board of Trustees, we're looking at public defender, auditor, risk manager, and bond counsel. Those would be for, they will be advertised at the beginning of August through the end of September. There will be working groups depending on the response and which trustees want to be involved. Again, we can only have a certain number of trustees involved with either a reappointment or a new appointment to occur in January 2016. The one that is a little bit more time sensitive, that will move faster than that timeline, is the RFP for a planner. The planner will serve the Board of Trustees, it may be an appointment of our existing planner to do work for the Board of Trustees, or it could be a new person as well, and the idea is that we're going to craft the RFP for a planner and then also include potential services for the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment. They are independent statutory boards, so they don't have to use who we use or we don't have to use who they use, but we'll include it and include them in the process so that if they do choose somebody else or if they choose to want to retain, they're involved with the process and it's really that their discretion to do what they choose to do, but we'll be moving on a timeline of ours getting posted 30 days and then we really need to bring someone in so we can get started on all these planning-related activities and trustee Rosner is all over us, so we got to get that one posted, but that's basically the timeline for it and I would hope that we could appoint somebody by early September for that role. Next, summer volunteer appreciation party, here's another exciting one. So as you recall, last year, I believe was the first year, we did something somewhat special, I thought it was special, I had a blast, where all the volunteers from our boards, committees, and commissions, we do an awful job of thanking them. I wish we came up with something once a month to show them our appreciation for all that they do for the village, but I would like us to do it again. And if you thought it went well, if you have suggestions, if you're on board, if we like the idea of summer, if we want to do it in the fall, but I want to get some, I hope nobody's listening right now, so we can discuss what type of nice things we'd like to give them, but I think we can do even more than just the party, perhaps a certificate, something that kind of, a more formal thank you along with a hot dog. Like, I really want to do a good job thanking all these folks who do a lot for the village. Thoughts?
Well, I thought that we can build upon what was done last year. It was a very nice reception and any additional things that you're able to come up to as a reward for their volunteering for, to improve the quality of life here in South Orange, it would be good, but what was done last year, I think, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, it was a lovely event, do the same thing and any additional things that you can do, it would be fine.
Any suggestions on timing?
I didn't have a suggestion on timing, no, but I was going to say that I think it would be a good idea to speak to each of the department heads and give them a chance to, I would say, call out or a chance to mention any particular employees who went over and above and just to publicly acknowledge that in front of the rest of the town employees and, so we might want to add a speaking piece to the event so that people can frankly acknowledge above and beyond the call of duty.
Like it.
And we should think about the ones who can't attend because they're on duty. That's a good one. If they're on duty, like police or fire.
But, but, it just sounds like.
We're having two conversations.
Yeah, we have it. This is different.
I went employee instead of volunteer.
Which is a great idea and I just leaned over. Appreciation.
So we have two, there's the one that Deborah works to put together, which is the employee event that we do in the summer, and this one was the volunteer appreciation party that we do for all the members of our, so there's two different things. Agree with that, feedback for Deborah, and is there anything else? For the volunteers, do we want to, was the timing of it last year good or would we like to? I think we did it in July or August.
I don't.
Do we want to shoot for September so that perhaps people are back?
Yeah, I have to admit, I don't really remember the volunteer one and I think either I wasn't around or there was a lot of other people who weren't around.
No, there were a lot of people there though.
We did last year, we did a, it was just kind of a picnic at Above outside and.
In the big patio?
Yeah, and we just invited everyone and we had about.
There were a lot of people there.
We had about 100, I thought.
I do think all the people were away, yeah.
Okay, so I have an idea, I don't think we're going to.
But anyway.
Solve all that tonight, but shoot me some ideas. I'm going to try and avoid August because I feel like a lot of people are gone then and I don't want to do July because it doesn't give me enough time to advertise, so I'm going to look more towards September, early September for this. And if you have ideas on ways to recognize people, or maybe we ask the committee chairs to like pick their All-Star or anything like that, that can make it fun, you know, a little limbo, you know, whatever you guys would enjoy. Just shoot me an email and we'll figure it out. And lastly was the village branding and the website. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page about this. We awarded the contract, signed the contract for Civic Plus, we're going to be moving forward with them. In the last Finance and IT Committee, trustee Levison had brought up the issue of the website. I really want to be involved, I know you want to be involved. Is there anything anybody else has to say about the website? I thought we want to create kind of a small working group to move through the site map to transition those things over. If there's anybody that you want to bring into the conversation, the more hands, the better, but I'm anticipating that from start to finish, from the first time we meet with Civic Plus, which should be within the next week when Adam gets back, probably about six, six months, start to finish.
It should be hopefully less than that.
the better. But I'm anticipating that from start to finish, from the first time we meet with Civic Plus, which should be within the next week when Adam gets back, probably about six, six months, start to finish.
It should be hopefully less than that. We have a couple of members from the Public Information Marketing Committee who have very specific skills in that area and points of view, and so I think they would like to be involved.
Because I think, would they be available during the day at all?
One of the two has daytime availability. The other one is a challenge.
Because for the kickoff meeting, I'd like, for whatever volunteers want to be involved, that they're there, so maybe we just ask the vendor to come at nighttime then. Okay. And this ties into the branding issue, because they kind of went together, was, so as the Public Information and Marketing Committee brought up, we have several different brands that exist in the village, from the gaslights to Village Hall to an orange with a gaslight in it, to, even if you look at our parking signage around town, and I know Safco wants to do more signage as it relates to where parking is available and stuff. So we're at that critical mass right now where we need a solid brand. I think we all want to have a very solid brand, and we need to deliver a solid
I'd like to weigh in. I vote against the orange.
Yeah. So we do have a lot of different things going on. Included in the budget was consulting services so that we can kind of professionalize the process. I don't doubt for one second, we have incredible volunteers, but I think they should be more involved with creating the creative brief for the RFP and then be able to hold somebody accountable financially with timetables, deliverables, all those two different things. Where I find the big needs are first, the village seal, which I think it would be great to involve like the Historical Society, maybe the HPC, and the more formal look of what we want the village seal to be. And then the other component is actually the branding, the larger how we're positioning ourselves with, you know, the Village Center used City Sense, Village Vibe, something like that, that is actually kind of more the exciting look for how we're marketing ourselves externally. And then we need basically what's called, I think, a corporate, what is it, corporate branding identity? It is like, what is our type font? What is all these different things that make our organization up, like our memos? And I don't want to
Style sheet.
Our style sheet, all the guidelines. Our departments seem to all use something a little bit different. We all use something a little bit different. So this is to come up with that mega just packet of all the things that we need to do. So, and it's kind of a fun exercise. I think there's a lot of stakeholders, so wanted to see where the trustees would like this to go.
What is the timeline on this? Because, for example, you know, when we start to reorder, are we going to reorder, I need to reorder business cards.
Yeah.
So
Order your business cards now. I don't see this being
No, no, hold on. And one of the things I was going to report on is that at the next meeting, I hope to have here that all of the beginnings of the petition to the legislature on the Charter review, because we're changing the name officially.
That's right.
And so that should be done in connection with the marketing and rebranding.
Yeah, and that's no big deal at all. I mean, right now, I wouldn't overpromise that it's going to be done quickly because I think a lot of people want to participate. It's one of those thoughtful processes where I feel like a lot of people are going to have strong opinions and want to be heard in crafting the brief. So I would, I don't want to commit to any timeline now because you don't know how many
That's fine.
People want to be involved. And you'll go through those cards very quickly. So, where would trustee Schnall, where would you suggest, should the branding work kind of hand in hand with the website? Or do you think it should be in the Public Information and Marketing Committee? Is it, is it its own working group? Maybe that's a way to go with it?
It seems to me it would make good to be a derivative of the Public Information Marketing Committee. That doesn't mean it has to be only from those, if there are other people who would like to participate and who have specific skill sets, I think that makes sense. But I would also separate it from the website. It's an input branding is an input, and your style is an input into your website, but I would keep those distinct.
Would you be okay if we advertised for volunteers on the website?
Sure.
Okay.
Has any work been done on the website so far? I mean, okay, because certainly whatever is developed for the brand identity for the larger village needs to be reflected on the website. And if we don't, that's why we have oranges and
That's right.
Buildings and all those other things. So it does need to be considered in the ultimate thing. So if they can begin concurrently, that would be nice. Because I would think that the people who are developing the website would like to know what they're ultimately supposed to make it look like.
One of the things I thought about that, and I actually heard back from a professional who brought up the exact same thing, is that apparently with the website, I don't claim to be an expert, but what we can let Civic Plus know is that we are undergoing a branding initiative, and for them, their style sheets and HTML can be updated to reflect whatever the font is. What I'm anticipating for the website is just a lot of high resolution photos, which wouldn't change with any branding or anything like that, depending on what subpage that you're on. So literally whatever the logo is decided and whatever the style sheet is for fonts and all that kind of stuff could be updated almost with a click in HTML, and then everything be populated. Sound good? Sound good? Excited? Everybody jazz hands? Good, good. All right. So moving on to the village administrators' report.
Couple updates. Roadwork is underway and going along well. The North Newstead roads, it begins with the curb work. The curbing contractor was not as fully staffed at the beginning of the job. He's transitioning over from a couple other projects. I understood they were going to have additional crews, may have already started this today with the additional crews. That's to replace the curbing on Mountain Crestwood, Northwoods, and Great Hills. The curbing is always the longer part of the process, so when that is done, then it's a separate contractor that comes in and does the milling and paving. The milling and paving of all those roads combined is probably two or three days top. So that'll go quickly once the curbing is done. The milling and overlaying on Vose and North Ridgewood actually started today. They were milling on Vose today. We switched up the schedule a little bit, so if anyone didn't catch up to it, it was to accommodate the summer program at the middle school, which apparently got moved to the middle school, traditionally held at the high school, but they're doing asbestos abatement at the high school, and that's where that sort of dropped the ball. But we were able to kind of last minute switch the schedule around, work very closely with the folks at the school. So the milling on Vose is today, the milling on North Ridgewood tomorrow, the paving on North Ridgewood on Wednesday, and then the paving on Vose tomorrow. So those, in a matter of a week, be like brand new roads. We just tonight awarded the contract for the last phase of Terrell. Takes it from Grove all the way down to South Orange Ave by Center Street, Seton Hall. That'll be a reconstruct of that road, new curbs, new paving, et cetera. We're out to bid currently for Tolu, the upper part of Tolu that's so bad. I don't remember the exact date, but we'll be getting those bids in probably within the month or less, and then look to award hopefully at a meeting in August. Blanchard and Crest are still on the, on the, just getting wrapped up on their drawing, as is Hartford. I think we're still waiting for some feedback from the Historic Commission, but, you know, to the extent we can, we want to push on all those roads. It also underscores something that we've discussed at Finance, certainly is, we are still at the sort of preliminary phase, but assuming that the Village Hall adaptive reuse goes to completion, to where we get into a contract, and we know it's going to happen, the effect of that is going to be to free up a significant amount of already appropriated capital money that we had appropriated for Village Hall, that will then be available for other projects. And certainly one of the points of emphasis, I would think, should be our road projects because we are, although we're making great progress in the last two or three years, we're still quite a bit behind. But we'll continue to work, and I think Public Works will be involved in that as well and Finance. But just to give you the heads up, that we should start thinking about that now, obviously, in the sort of hope and expectation that the adaptive reuse is going to come to fruition, so that when it does, we'll be ready and know what we want to repurpose those funds for. The other item, I just wanted to give a quick update on the River Corridor project. You recall, two years ago, we got the $560,000 grant to replace the bridge. That project is basically completely designed and was teed up and ready to go out to bid, and the Historic folks down at the state want to take a look at the pump house to see what, if any historic value has. It is not designated, it's not on any landmark list or otherwise, but nevertheless, there's a requirement of the funding that they review it. That's kind of where we're waiting. At the same time, you recall earlier this year, we got notice from an award of a million dollar grant to do the trail on either side of that bridge from Maplewood all the way to Third Street. Two things on that. We are trying to coordinate, still trying to coordinate a date for a public event to announce that grant. When you have, you know, US congressmen that you want to invite and state officials, logistics and the scheduling can become difficult. So we're continuing to work with Congressman Payne's office on his availability, the state people, county leaders who also help support the application. But we'll keep you posted on that, and we'll certainly do our best to accommodate everybody's schedule. But kind of have to start from the federal officials first. And then the other component of that is, we have had some discussions, not that we're looking to defer anything, but the longer this bridge thing gets dragged out with the Historic as to whether there's any way to consolidate the two grants into one larger project and do it at once. I don't know if that's viable or not, but that's where that is. But if people were wondering, and just to circle back on that.
Are we, the bridge, we, do we have any kind of a timeline for when the state Historic has to get back to it? Because that bridge grant is also on a timeline.
Right. And we've certainly kept the grant people, and they're aware of it. It's their requirement. So, I mean, I don't think that'll be held against us, any delays associated with Historic.
Can you talk to Wyoming Avenue?
Pardon me?
Can you talk to Wyoming?
The counties project?
Yeah.
You may have more
All I know is that they, or he left.
Yeah, as far as I know, it's still, it's still planned for August.
Yeah, but they're currently working on putting in the handicap accessibility on the sidewalks, replacing the soar covers and raising the soar, soar covers as well.
And also, I mean, you just reminded me, there's a pending closure of South Orange Ave, the S-curves.
Correct.
Two, two closures.
Right.
Twenty, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third.
Correct.
Twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third.
Trying, and I did reach out to the county engineer to try and get as much definitive information as to exactly when it's going to happen, what their proposed detours are, so, and with the offer that we will publicize it as much as we can on our website via our announcements, social media, et cetera. But I'm not caught up on all my emails.
Yeah, I think the discussion was is that we don't want cars wandering through Newstead. Is that we have a specific plan of how those cars need to be diverted?
Yeah, and I think hopefully the expectation would be, you know, local traffic only beyond a certain point, and then
Correct.
This has been an issue every time that South Orange Avenue has been closed.
We want to do a better job of that.
Yeah.
Encourage the county to do a better job of it.
That would be
So twenty-first through twenty-third and twenty-eighth through thirty.
And they're going to direct the traffic on Wyoming as opposed up through Harding and all those other streets.
Yeah, we'll try to avoid having a bunch of cars ending up stuck on Crest Circle.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Lewis, can we touch base with the county and see if they'll give us the big flashing sign, like a few days in advance to let people know that it's going to be closed?
There is one now. There's one there now.
Is it announcing the closing, though?
It's been there for several weeks.
Wow.
For a week or so.
Must never pass it.
Yes, it is. I see it.
Okay.
It's, it's up just above
It's at the reservoir.
And by
Cross from the top.
The top, cross from the top.
Okay, all right. That's one where as many people as we can get it out to, the better.
But they've had it there for, for at least a week.
Okay. And I just got an email from a resident. Can everybody please remember to speak as much into the microphone as possible? I think some of the viewers at home are having a hard time hearing us tonight.
Okay.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lewis? Also, another thank you to him for the budget. We talk about each other a lot, but ultimately, I think the budget reflects our professionals who spend a great deal of time putting it together. Moving on to village council, Mr. Rother, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just, just a couple. The water system condition study that we commissioned HDR to perform will be issued very shortly, but absent the ten-year budget that's supposed to be coming with, and the reason for not producing that is that we are still missing information that we requested from East Orange Water Commission, which will enable HDR to prepare that, that ten-year capital plan. I will be pressing my counterpart for that this week in a very heavy way, and I'd ask that Mr. Lewis do the same with regard to his counterpart, so that we can get the ten-year capital plan. But, but the, but the system condition study will be ready shortly, which we will also make available to all the parties who are going to be bidding on the operation and management contract. In connection with all of this, our committee is going to be preparing a new timeline because we have lost some time in the process. We have a little less than a year and a half now to get all of the pieces in place. The next two critical things that we know are going to happen very, very shortly are the community meeting, which trustee Levison and Clark are arranging. And do you have the precise date now?
No, I don't.
No, but, but it's going to be toward the end of this month or early August? Is that correct?
It's at the end, twenty-seventh?
We were shooting for the thirtieth.
Thirty?
It was the day we were knocking around, yeah. But, of course, I wasn't going to be there, so.
So, so we're going to, we're going to be announcing that shortly and putting that on, on the website, that, that community meeting to, and that's going to be primarily to discuss the, the location and development of the pump station on the DPW site. Shortly after that, in early August, we're going to be getting the returns on the proposals for the O and M, the operations and management contract. But we will be providing to the board shortly a revised time schedule, which will encompass those steps and all of the other steps that we need to, to take to bring to completion both the operations of the system and the new water supply. That's all I have.
Are there any questions for village council? Moving right along to the trustee reports. As a reminder to the public, it is not that trustee Schnall is the only person that has a report, but we rotate based on meetings and who's meeting when. And so we just try and make sure we break it up so we don't have a mega meeting with all trustees at once. And so trustee Schnall, you are up.
All right. So just as a nice little add-on from talking about branding, it's not just a logo or an image, but there's actually an entire vibe or feeling that we are building for our village. And that also includes our events. So this past September, it's almost coming up on the second annual, we did Play Day. And we wanted, Public Information and Marketing Committee was looking for another signature event that would be done in the spring or summer. And that's actually one of the reasons we began and did South by South Orange. And we toyed with an idea of sort of a TEDx type of conference, but ultimately we chose a format which included arts, ideas, technology, and music, kind of a riff off of the South by Southwest down in Texas City. And I just want to report that I think there were several, you know, our goals for that event were several, and I think we met most of them. One of those was to increase volunteering, to have more people get involved, new people to get involved in this type of an event. More people coming to new venues, including this facility right here, SOPAC, the Performing Arts Center. We happen to know that of the people who registered and bought tickets for the event, half of them had never been to a performance here at SOPAC. So that was a pretty nice metric, knowing that half of the people
Wow, that's great.
Were net new. And I'm sure the folks at SOPAC were pretty happy about that. We also, I think, activated a younger and a very vibrant, I don't know if it's, if it's purely youth, but it was a whole lot of vibrancy. And I think some of that, some of that has to do with the cultural arts and technology being included in the program that attracted a lot of that. And I think, again, we're in a, believe it or not, we're in a competitive environment. As our real estate brokers will tell you, there's, people have choice. If they're moving out of New York City or any other place, they, they can look around, whether it be Livingston, Milburn, Montclair, or ourselves, they're looking to see where do they feel comfortable. And I think these types of events go very far in terms of attracting the folks we want to have. And so the net is over 700 people in the first year attended South by South Orange. And I think, again, from a, from a number standpoint, that's, that's pretty, pretty darn good for a first year.
Is that based off of sold wristbands?
That is based off of, off of sold wristbands.
Seven hundred percent over last year?
I know.
Someone once said that South by Southwest, Austin, Texas, began their first event with 700. I can't, that I can't validate or not. But, but I think, again, given that it was our first year and that day two, there was a lot of rain, I think was a good showing. And most importantly, when I think about what we held important as a metric, wasn't necessarily the quantity. I think the number is good, but most importantly, did the folks who attend really enjoy it? Did they find themselves enriched and really enjoy the experience, as well as the performers? Because there was something to be said for the, many of the performers actually performed for free as volunteers. And I think, I know, everybody said they want to come back again. So I felt that perhaps was the number one metric, is those people who experienced it really enjoyed the whole thing. The other aspect, which I know village president Collum is excited about, is we also did it as an aspect of community university, of a partnering relationship with Seton Hall University. And they were not only a financial sponsor, but they helped out in a number of ways. Our media event was there. They helped us to publicize. They had several of the events were run by them. So it was really a nice partnering, I think, again, between Seton Hall University and our village. And I think, you know, the other really great thing And I think, you know, the other really great thing was that it was a proof of concept. That I think, you know, now that we've done this once, there's a lot of learnings. I know we'll do things differently next year, but it positions us, I think, really well to, to learn and improve where we were, and I'm really looking forward already to next year, but first I want to take a rest for, for a little bit.
So what are you going to call it next year?
Ah, that's a good, yeah, we actually are not going to be able to call it the same, so maybe we'll put that out as a question to, to, to the residents to help us come up with the, the new name. But anyhow, I, I felt like it was, it was a, it was a nice success, so.
I attended the Saturday night performance here, and it was wonderful.
Yeah.
Do you know how many people total were involved with the event? Like whether they volunteered or they performed, like that as a metric? Because I saw so many people with the volunteer shirts, and like even if you were attending, you were also performing the next day, like it was...
Well, I can tell you, we ordered, I think it was sixty, we didn't have, we didn't call them volunteers, we actually called them ambassadors. That, that was the nomenclature we used, and there was over sixty of those shirts used, so we had over sixty volunteers. There was a marketing team of about ten people that came together. That was the other really nice takeaway, was the young folks came in and social media, which was an area that I needed a lot of help.
Killed it on social media.
They really came in strong, and that was another great way that we built up a lot of people who, who learned about it, and, and the younger crowd clearly came in through our social media. So there was a group of that, so I, I would say there's probably between performers and volunteers, again, there's over a hundred of those. So it was another really nice metric. So that's...
I added one more bullet point under yours that you didn't submit to me, but I added it for you.
What is it?
The Health and Fitness Challenge.
Health and Fitness Challenge.
Not the winners, but just what's coming up.
So we actually, so there, oh, we, we don't want to announce the winners yet, right? What, what I can say, after running this program again, which began in January and finished in June, there were, each monthly, third Thursday, there was a weigh-in. It was, it was a contest, but more importantly than just the, the, the weighing contest, it was about being aware of physical fitness, health and wellness. And I'm actually hoping that we can get a cumulative amount of, of weight loss. I have to go through the spreadsheet and calculate it, but I think it's going to be rather significant, and people paid quite a bit of attention to it, so I think that was a success. And we're having a little pool party for all the participants. It's going to be Sunday, July 26th. It will be all, for, only for, for our participants. We had about 120 folks who actually participated, so looking forward to finishing off the year and letting everybody know who the big winners were, and who the big losers were, actually.
And we're going to start planning in advance. If you remember, I mean, Dr. Hugh, he had a great idea, but it was like November, we're like, yeah, let's do it. Maybe it was December, and we're like, it's got to kick off in the new year, so we kind of threw it together as quickly as possible so we could do it, and now we kind of have some data and feedback, and if we start now, we can get it ready for another, like, January New Year's launch, where we've all eaten way too much food and, you know, but it was really something special. And I see people exercising and walking around town still wearing their So Fit shirts and all that kind of stuff, and I carried Team So Bot.
Oh.
Nice one, guys, so, no, we...
I believe the three of the monthly winners came from the So Bot team.
Three of the monthly, unfortunately, Walter was not one of the three.
He was a team player just to sign up.
Walter started, you really think he's going to lose?
So it was, it was very good. So definitely a big thank you to Dr. Hugh Snyder, too, because it's a great initiative, and we're going to celebrate on the 26th, and we're going to eat a healthy meal, and we're going to get ready for January 2016.
Yeah.
All right.
Madam President, before we move on to the agenda, one, an oversight on my part. I did want to, it wasn't deliberately to build up an era of mystery, but the gentleman to the right of me, just occurred to me that most people may not know what he's doing here and who he is. Certainly, certainly I think some of you have, have known Clyde, and, and some of you had the pleasure of meeting him tonight, but to my right is Clyde Otis, recent addition to Post Pollock Village Council's firm. Clyde, and, and certainly Steve could speak to it more, but I think brings a wealth of public sector experience, a lot of other areas of expertise. My exposure so far of working, he's been very involved with us, getting up to speed on the East Orange Water stuff, and, and just a great addition to the firm, and I wanted, in case anyone was wondering who he was, he didn't have a name later.
And, and I should say that Clyde, who was formerly First Assistant Corporation Counsel for the city of Newark, was in the litigation opposing East Orange Water while he was there on behalf of Newark, so he, he came to our firm knowing many of the pieces that he's got to pursue now on behalf of the village, and he's definitely a, a real plus to our firm and to South Orange.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Lewis, and thank you, Clyde. Hopefully, you're going to like the team and enjoy working with this team, it's a good bunch.
I have already, and I'm going to hope to continue to enjoy. I'm sure I will.
Wonderful. And next, we are going to open the second public comment period. As a reminder, we do a public comment in the beginning of our agenda before the board takes formal action, and then we have a second public comment. So again, please state your name, address, and please limit comments to three minutes.
Okay, Virginia Canino, 42 Blanchard Road. Kind of digesting what you said before, so I don't know if the board will have control over this, but we closed the Jersey Animal Coalition due to health code violations. Now we seem to be sending our animals to Dr. Kamani Griffiths, who has both the East Orange Pound and Country Lakes Animal Clinic, and the East Orange Pound has had severe violations. Seems like out of the frying pan into the fire, they have posted no photographs can be taken in there. There, if our animals go there, they're only open from 11:00 to 1:00 during the week. No disease control program and no records. So is that something also that's only a health department issue?
Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to be heard at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Claire Roberts, and I'm a resident of Maplewood. So the reason that I am here tonight is concerning the usage of the former JAC building. It's no secret, I have emailed all of you, I think, that I am in favor of still trying to have a shared shelter for SOMA, because that is a possibility that is still open, even though Maplewood, to my great delight, is going to enter into at least a short-term contract with St. Hubert's. And I was at the Baird for that very lively discussion on June 17th, and president Column, I think you mentioned that there was a good possibility that there would be another community forum to discuss the usage of the building. So I just want to ask, do you know at this time, is there going to be another community forum anytime soon? Thank you.
Thank you. So for the, let me just recap, and any of the trustees can feel free to chime in if I miss anything.
Is the public comment section closed?
Oh, I'm sorry, was there anybody else from the public who wishes to be heard? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment section of the agenda and try and address the questions that were raised. Ms. Canino, with respect to our agreements with outside groups and organizations, that does fall within the jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees. It is something that we are actively looking at, between your question and the one brought up by Ms. Roberts, and I thank you for all the information and emails that you've been sending the governing body, they have been very helpful, and, and we certainly read all of them, and I'm kind of new to a lot of this stuff, so thank you for doing that, is that we handle the facilities, who we contract with, et cetera. The Board of Health sets policies. So for example, the Board of Health would make a recommendation on TNR. The governing body, the Board of Trustees, will dictate what happens with the future use of the former JAC building, 298 Walton Avenue. As an update on that, and it's tough, because I know if you don't hear us say something, it appears like nothing's being done, we did focus on Village Hall for, for several weeks, where, where we had put a lot of our resources there. We are now back to some level of normalcy, where we're going back to the important items, very important items, that just kind of got put on hold for the time being with this facility and our animal control services and our policies governing, you know, how we handle animals in South Orange. We will be looking for a recommendation, and we discussed this in executive session. Two of our trustees, both trustee Clark and trustee Levison, have been evaluating options. They've been working with Mr. Lerner, who's not here with us tonight, on, on the pricing models, the costs. I met with Mayor DeLuca. What I failed to mention was that this facility and South Orange and Maplewood, working together, are, are looking to, to do this together, or look at options that would benefit both towns, so that's an active conversation. It's almost similar to what happened with Village Hall. There's a lot of questions I can't answer publicly, but it doesn't mean that we're not working on it, or that we're not reading all the information that you're sending us. I even check Maplewood online regularly, so I'm keeping posted on, on the discussion and what people's concerns are, and when you send us to best practices. In fact, some of the municipalities that you shared have best practices. I've spoken with their elected officials there as well. So you are keeping us on our toes. We're hoping to come up with something good, and hopefully that answers your questions, is that there's the policies, and then there's the contracts, the facilities, and the budget items, which this board does control and make recommendations and enter into contracts over. Are there any additional comments that the board would like to add to answer the questions raised by Ms. Canino or Ms. Roberts? Okay, fantastic. Moving on to discussion items. First, trustee Rosner has an exciting new initiative to share with the community, School Funding Formula Working Group.
One of the things that we've been talking about for quite some time is the school funding formula, which appears to be very unfair to South Orange, based on the number of students that we send, and the old formula is based on assessed values. And one of the residents came to me and had done a lot of research, and we decided that it's worth pursuing, and there's a legal process that you can go through, and then there were some steps that we might want to take to try and level the playing field. I don't want to give all the numbers out tonight, because I didn't memorize them, but the number is very, very substantial, and it approaches $10 million in the difference between what we should be paying, what we feel we should be paying versus, and we're paying $10 million too much into the pot if you did it based on purely on population of the students.
I think we're like 33%, 30-something percent of the...
We're paying 43% of the...
And we're paying 43%.
And we have 33% of the students, so the number, the number's substantial. So I, I agreed with this resident and a couple of other trustees, another trustee, Jeff, trustee DeBoe is going to work with me, and we're actually working, meeting with a couple of other residents who have some interest in this area and some knowledge to work with us to, to meet, and at one point we'll, and, and of course, we'll invite the village attorney to join us. And that's, that's what we think, you know, in the long run, is a, is a very, very, it could be a very rough process to get done, and there are some people who say you can't get it done, and there are other people who say it's not that difficult, and we'll find out. But we'll certainly entertain it and try and get us to a, to a fairer solution.
Comments from board members?
No, I, I think it's a great initiative, you know, the formula that's set by, I, I guess that state statute, it's so unfair because it's based on the aggregate value of property, and the aggregate value of property in South Orange, it's higher than Maplewood, so we're paying, you know, 43% of the tax, you know, the school, the, the school board budget, based on 30-something percent, low 30% of children in the school system. It's just not fair.
So, Mr. Rother, I know you did a significant amount of research on this, I believe it was with trustee Gould. For both trustee DeBoe and trustee Rosner, some of that research information that you still have, can you please forward that along for the purposes of this working group?
You know, I, I, I have a view on this, which I will share with, with that working group, and historically, historically, these kinds of government expenses had been based on, on assessing property values, and so that's, that's something to be overcome if, if the relief that is being sought can be achieved, but we, we're, we're fighting a system that's been in place for a long, long time.
Luckily, sometimes people, sometimes things change, and people recognize them, it just takes time.
Things, things can change, but I, I can tell you, in the 1970s, I was an expert witness, at the time I was the tax collector of the city of Newark, and I was an expert witness in, in a case that went pretty far up in the, in the court system, where Essex County was challenging similar disparities throughout the state, and we lost that case. But, but I'm always willing to, to hear new theories, new ideas, and, and work with the group to see what can be achieved.
So it might be an example between choosing, between feeling like Don Quixote or Sisyphus.
Yeah, well, no, I, I, I think obviously the, the comment that times change is, is, is a valid observation to make. We've, we've seen many legal principles changed, eroded over, over the course of time, and maybe this is an issue that's, that's ripe for that kind of consideration by the courts. But as, as I say, it's much too complex an issue to get any resolution at a, at a discussion like this. It's, it's going to take some time and some, you know, serious, serious consideration.
And I believe what we discussed in finance and IT was representatives from the Board of Education, and also inviting both the co-chairs of the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee to be involved as well. So that's a good starting point, and that's a...
We've, we've reached out to a couple of those people already.
Great.
I would suggest a good person who's really, really informed on this regarding the formula would be Joanna Wright. You know, I would suggest you reach out to her.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, so trustee Rosner and trustee DeBoe, best of luck. And we have one more discussion item, rules regarding signs on residential properties, code 92163, trustee Clark.
Yeah, this is maybe not so interesting, but for those of you who are unfamiliar with it, 92163 is Land Development Section, and it's specifically aesthetics, signs, awnings, canopies, marquees, security gates, and facades. I'm particularly interested in the area that applies to temporary, what are referred to as temporary signs, as opposed to permanent signs on residential districts. So most of you know these as campaign signs, they're what we all stuck in the ground in an effort to get elected, that sort of thing. The reason I'm even bringing it up is because we have had a variety of those signs sort of flourishing throughout the village, and our code enforcement official was asking me for some clarity on, on what he, what we wanted him to do with this.
Are they campaign signs or signs other than campaign?
That's part of the issue.
Okay.
The, this was sort of further made clear that I guess we needed to decide on some things, because I was also approached by the head of a, a neighborhood committee who was interested in having their entire neighborhood committee produce their own signs, presumably to be placed throughout their entire neighborhood. The, our, our counsel informed me that that is legal, and in, in his, his eyes, there is no ambiguity in the, in the, the code, and so in, in reading it myself, the only area where I think there is perhaps ambiguity is in the section dealing with ongoing political campaigns. And this is where our, our code enforcement official was, was asking me for, for some clarity, because basically what defines a political campaign? Is it strictly, and I believe it's your interpretation, that it is strictly a, a campaign as in individuals trying to be elected, and therefore is subject to the 30-day rule, it's only up for 30 days, so, but then we have all these gray area things, which are the ones he's concerned with, like the "drive like your kids live here" signs. And over in, in, in Maplewood right now, they have "keep the village a village" signs. And over in Maplewood right now, they have "Keep the Village a Village" signs. So you could argue that that's a political campaign. When we had the "No Damn" signs, that was more or less a political campaign. It was not an elective political campaign. And so there are potentially some freedom of speech issues around this, and there are other exceptions in this particular code. They're pretty specific. They're for things like garage sales, real estate signs, and up to and including kids with lemonade stands. So I guess I'm asking you, what do we think of these gray area things? Are they freedom of speech? Are they political campaigns? And I expect counsel will weigh in with his interpretation and.
Political signs, there's not much you can do about pure political signs. People ought to put them up, and I know Steve wants to say something about it, but I think the issue, the problem we've always run into is allowing, not allowing any signs on public property unless it's a village, unless it's a village-sponsored event, like the concerts in the park during the summertime. And that's where we've always tried to crack down on, is making sure people don't put their signs on our public property, to drive, you know, the "Do Not Drive Like Your Kids Live Here" signs, which mostly got put up by neighborhoods, or the 25 mile an hour speed limit signs. I don't think anyone ever really objected to. And then when we had the pure advertising signs, not to pick on anybody, but the college hunks would pick up junk, or whatever it was called, they were putting signs up everywhere, and we had code enforcement take them all down, because that was clearly advertising, wasn't political, and it wasn't a neighborhood or a personal choice. They would just go into key locations and throw those signs up. For contractor signs, we always wanted to make sure there was only contractor signs, you know, someone's roofing, or only done when somebody was actually working at the job. Because you want to make sure that someone just didn't put a sign up there, and then someone could pull a truck up there, and you didn't know if somebody was working. So you only wanted those signs up when they were actually working at the job. And then I think there was the real estate signs, you know, for when you sell your house, and if there's an actual open house, have up to two directional signs. What was the problem stemming from? Has there been a recent issue that, you know, that really makes it come to light?
Well, it's more the expectation of issues going forward.
For the code enforcement, okay.
Yeah.
Steve, you want to weigh in on the political signs?
Well, yeah, on the political signs, I've directed the village staff not to enforce the political signs, because they're unconstitutional.
I think the only place we might have to change the ordinance is to take the political signs out there. They can't be on public property, but they can be, but if people want to put them on their private property, they can put them up.
Yeah, but that's not what our ordinance, our ordinance has a lot of prohibitions that aren't constitutional.
I said we may have to update the ordinance to.
Yeah, yeah. I tried to get that ordinance updated. I submitted a revision to the ordinance, and it wouldn't pass. This, the previous board wouldn't, wouldn't second it, and it died.
Yeah, but I sure, I sure.
So you've got a continued ordinance on the books that is not being enforced and kept.
I know, but I think there was some reason why that particular ordinance.
But I would, I would certainly concur. I think it is something we need to look at. There's two things, and I know Mr. Rother's aware of it as well. There was just a U.S. Supreme Court case that came out within the last two weeks, that specifically even, you know, the clear distinction between political and non-political, if the basis is aesthetics, they've more or less said, if it's a same-size sign that looks the same, what, it's not really.
Okay.
So that muddies the waters, and then I think there's also clear, we need to get a clearer understanding of the difference between signs on our property versus on private property.
But that's already clear. That's already clear. That doesn't have to be clarified.
But Steve, on political signs, which I understand, you know, that you can't regulate this, can you still regulate, I'm just asking the question, can you regulate the size of the political signs, or?
We do.
Or can someone put up a sign? Can someone put up a sign that's 12 feet by 18 feet?
You can have, you can have reasonable, reasonable regulation, you can, but what we have on the books now is largely unenforceable, because they're, you know, the requirement, one sign, I mean, the president may support, may support different candidates. If in one election, there are two candidates who are not running on the same ticket, that means you can only support one candidate in the election. I mean, there are features in that ordinance that are just unenforceable. And as I say, I tried to get that changed once before, and the previous board refused to act on it.
I think the problem was the messenger last time.
Right now, you're saying you can have unlimited signs on your property?
Technically.
Right now?
For the same candidate?
Yes.
No, 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 for different candidates.
For different candidates, but the, but the ordinance doesn't speak to those issues. The ordinance simply says you can have only one political sign on your property.
The one that we probably hit the most frequently during campaigns, and we are all too familiar with this, is corner properties. Is that generally, that's the only time that politically, it's like, you can only have one, you can have two, it's a corner property, yada, yada.
Well, no, that's, that's what, that's what raised the question.
Yeah.
But once the question gets raised, you got to say, you know, is it reasonable to say you can have only one? And it's not. Because there are many reasons why constitutionally you should be permitted to have more than one.
And because I was watching the board meeting when this went down, I really have no life, that was a concern that was raised by the trustees, and why it died was, what's going to stop somebody from putting 10 in a row for the exact same candidate? You have a very long property, it's like one, two, three, and all of a sudden, it looks like a lot. And there was a concern about just overall clutter.
They do that on public properties, when you get on and off the highways.
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's not permitted, period. There's no question about it.
But then there's the other issue, aside from political campaigns that are easily definable like that, is "Keep the Village a Village" or "Drive Like Your Child Lives Here," is that a political campaign? Is that, is, I mean, how do you define what that is?
Keep the Village a Village is a political campaign.
That one seems.
But Drive Like Your Child Lives Here is not. It's a safety.
I could say that's political.
It's political, yeah.
Sometimes it's more subtle, though. There were cases, it could be potentially a problem, where you decide where something's more subtle about whether it's, whether it's political or not, and then, and then we have to make a decision, or the code enforcement people have to make a decision.
And with those types of issues that aren't related, whereas a, an actual elective campaign has, has an end date, "Drive Like Your Children Lives Here" has no end date. And so they could conceivably be there for quite some time.
But in fact, we have those identical signs as permanent signs put up by our Public Works Department.
Well, that's, that's the other thing, in the case of what was suggested to me, where they, for, you know, reasons of public safety, they wanted speeding signs on all their lines, lawns. You know, we already have posted speed limits, et cetera. So, I mean, the efficacy of an effort like that is a separate issue, but do we feel that?
Let me suggest, let me suggest that my firm take a shot at writing an opinion, and based particularly on the new Supreme Court, United States Supreme Court opinion that came out, that may shed some additional light on where we are. And write an opinion in terms of what is faulty with our current ordinances, and where we can and can't go with regard to some of these issues. And perhaps we can vet that through the legal committee and come back with some recommendations.
I think there is another question that I don't know if that understanding is throughout the community, of what is village property? That in fact, there is a border in front of everybody's home, which is village property.
Most homes.
In most homes, yes. And that, that's a restricted area.
The width of the right of way versus the pay.
Yeah, correct.
I think that's, that's further confused, too, by things like our own, our own efforts to put up, for instance, the pedestrian safety programs, and those are posted, or are supposed to be posted only on municipal property. And so, yeah, I think for, certainly for the casual observer, it's pretty hard to know what the rules are simply by looking at the examples. And I can also say, you know, not being a lawyer, reading this, it doesn't get much easier, having read that. So it might be worth taking a whack at simplifying this.
Where do holiday signs fall? I mean, you have the holiday signs. You have some huge inflatables on people's lawns that are, I mean, they're in your face. They're big. I mean.
There's, there's no provision in the ordinance that addresses it.
So I can put a 75-foot inflatable on my lawn, and it's totally within my right.
But it can only stay there.
Right now, there is no, there is no, no ordinance that addresses that.
Evan Easyn DeBoe, yeah, yeah. I mean, again, fortunately with those, they tend to have an end date built in. You know, you don't really want to be the person with the big inflatable Santa on your lawn in July, that sort of thing.
Walter, for the time being, what I would suggest code enforcement, I feel like we've done this, we've talked about this issue like a few times, but we never really come up with anything. For the ones that are legal, that are clearly illegal, the ones that are on public property, I think that's one that we have to be very clear about. If you're not a village entity, if you're not a village sanctioned entity, you cannot be putting personal, political, whatever the statement is, on public land. But we didn't want code enforcement to go out and just start ripping people's signs out. We want to customer service, advise the homeowners that they just keep your sign, just keep it on your property before taking it and telling them, you know, come pick it up at our municipal offices. So maybe for the time being, we just give people, you know, casual warnings and move the sign up to their porch, or whatever code enforcement suggests, rather than pull them or cite them or anything like that. Because there are a good number of signs that are out that are actually on public property that aren't us.
I would think that we would need to make a greater effort, though, to also make this more clear, and then communicate that to residents as well. And unfortunately, right now, it's not super clear, and.
Well, that is clear. If you, if you have a.
Well, that piece of it, yeah.
Public property is public property.
That piece of it, yeah, but again, I could easily look at these things and not think of them as political campaigns, because, again, these are all considered temporary signs. And for some of those signs, the only thing that makes them temporary is that they're printed on plastic with the wiry stakes, because they're there for, I don't know, until people get sick of moving them when they mow their lawn.
Do you know my stop for pedestrians and crosswalks has withstood like an entire winter, and they're still up?
Yeah, I do, actually.
They're still up. Now, understood. And the other thing we could do is use the next addition of the gaslight, maybe to have a blurb, like signage, we should use the gaslight more to communicate policy items to people, to make it clear for them. And so if we have some, something that's just a quick checklist, that we can run in the gaslight, so people understand what their responsibilities are, we can do that.
And in the meantime, on Thursday, morning's meeting, I will talk to code enforcement again, and we'll try to clarify what we can.
One last point to the neighborhood presidents. You know how we had started the whole Be Street Smart initiative to address what they're trying to do, which is post signs that deal with traffic calming and all that stuff? I circled back with Anne Marie to talk about coordinating this with NJTPA, because we know the signs are effective, they're not just clutter, it's not rebranding, and then have it be a part of a municipal effort, so it's not a bunch of private residents, but it's a little bit more facilitated by us with them, and posted in places that make sense, and not just 20 in a row in the same neighborhood.
And I would argue that with those things as campaigns, that they are initially more effective because they're sort of a surprise element, because so many of the people traveling these roads, it's a regular route that they take to work, or to school, or wherever. So it's only when there's something new pops up that it really makes an impression. And so it's actually to the benefit of the larger message if it is periodic, or if it's temporary.
Yeah.
Pops up, ups down, and, you know, we can move it around from neighborhood to neighborhood or something like that.
Sounds good.
Reading between the lines there.
Follow-up item on that is that Mr. Rother will work with Trustee Clark and the legal committee on a memo explaining this, and maybe we look back at.
We'll have a memo done.
You already did an ordinance last time, so maybe we pick that, dust that one off.
No, I get it. I was just thinking, one of the other items in the ordinance is you, you got to pay a fee to put a political sign up. I mean, this is so patently unenforceable, it's.
I'm going to create a long slide about the fee. There was, is there any new business from the trustees? Okay, before you adjourn, I'm just going to take a quick moment to recognize Village Green, Village Green, Mary and Carolyn. So my apologies to them, because I wanted us to do a proclamation for them. They are celebrating one year.
That's right.
In local community journalism. I think we can all agree that they stay on top of what's happening in this community, whether we like the article, don't like the article, it doesn't matter. You guys are always there, you're always following us very closely, I think you're very fair. And so I'm, I will be preparing a proclamation at the next meeting, recognizing one year as Village Green serving South Orange and Maplewood.
Yeah. Happy birthday.
Okay, is there any other new business?
Move to.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Meeting adjourned.
And the lighting.